She was glad we all voted for it. But, yeah, but 76,000.
Good morning. I now call the August 22nd, 2019 work session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 AM. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this board meeting.
Good morning. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida sunshine law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the sunshine law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form for the record. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the sunshine law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these rules.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
Good morning. A few weeks ago, I mentioned to you that we had the situation with our extended day and that the Department of Children and Families had suggested highly that we get licensed and we were kind of in a communications situation with them. I'm pleased to let you know that I had reached out to Ms. Miller, Joyce Miller, who's the Assistant Regional Counsel for our DCF region, and she did a little digging and says that they're very pleased to work with us. As we move forward, extended day will operate as normal as we move forward with licensing. So I think that's a good thing in all sorts of contexts. But we've already picked up the packets and we will be moving forward with that. It's quite a lengthy process, but the best thing about it is we already have staff that have been there, done that. Pam Eubanks, that's her world. We've got Dr. Halls, Pam Eubanks, and everybody is quite on board with getting this done. So rest easy with that, and we're excited about that, that new partnership. Yesterday, I was at the state board meeting, and I was there to give some updates on Evergreen. One, two, three, four, two, three, four, five. There you go. And it was, it was quick, it was good. Any opportunity to, to share with them the great things that we're doing is welcome. I'm passing down to you the updates that I shared with them. There weren't, there weren't questions other than, there was one about, of course, they had seen the headlines in the paper and they were pleased with, with what we were doing to fill those vacancies. And that was, that was about it. It was about five minutes and that was all. Then, don't forget, tonight starts regular season football. Our football season starts tonight. Vanguard's at Gainesville tonight, and then everybody else is playing starting tomorrow. So keep that on your radar, and we look forward to seeing you out there to support that as well. We also have girls volleyball in full swing, lots, lots of great athletics happening in the fall. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin with the continuation of our budget review with Ms. Barbara Dobbin's? Or is it Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis? Okay.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Cummings, board members, Superintendent Mayor, Attorney Gibbs, and Mrs. Prestapino, good morning. What I wanted to do is just a summary of what we have gone through in this whole budget process, and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dobbin's to address the question that you had from the last work session. So on July 23rd, you received the tentative budget for advertising. July 30th, we had our first public hearing to set the tentative millages as well as adopting a tentative budget of over $593 million. The highlights of that budget is that it was a $39.1 million increase over the adopted budget. Of that $39 million, 24 is attributed to fund balance. Those are items that we have to carry over, whether they are restricted, such as capital, the capital fund, or are categoricals. And then the remaining 14, eight was made up of an increase in federal dollars, food service or federal grants, state dollars, probably tired of hearing me say this, due to the turnaround supplement and the best and brightest being rolled into the FEFP calculation. And the local increase was due to our 7% increase in property values. That pretty much sums up the change from last year's adopted budget to this year's adopted tentative budget. On August 8th, we had our first work session, and it was predominantly the general fund, which represents 70% of our entire budget, 412 million. That includes our operating budget, the adult education, as well as the referendum. Also, we have an increase in the base student allocation, $75. As you recall, that base student allocation, which is $4,279, is pretty much the only flexibility we have in terms of allocating the dollars. In the referendum, we had an additional $1 million, and majority of that was used up to pay for safe schools being added to the referendum. It was, of course, extended for another four years. In our second work session, on August 15th, we discussed the remaining funds, capital, debt service, food service, special revenue, other, which included the grants, as well as our internal service fund. What I would like to bring to your attention, there was a handout on, on the, in front of you, and it says Marion County School District Rating Notice. On yesterday, we received notice of an upgrade. Very happy to report that to you. The credit increased, our rating increased from A1 to AA3. And then for the certificate of participation, that increased from an A2 to an A1. So we're very proud of that, and I provide a summary for you, and as well as the Moody's report that explains it in more detail, what that means to the school district. So I just wanted to share that with you because we had discussed that previously. Today is our third work session, which was as an as needed. So we did have one question from the prior work session, and Mrs. Dobbin's will discuss that. But I want to remind you that we have the final hearing, September 10th, which we will at that time conform the tentative budget to the final budget. All the changes that have happened since you approved the tentative budget will be reflected in the final budget on September 10th. Dr. Mayor mentioned the state board meeting. I listened to that meeting yesterday, and the Department of Education presented their budget, it's called a legislative budget request, to the state board for the 2021 budget. So the session starts January, and they've already started working on that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Again, I appreciate the support from all of you, appreciated your questions, because I think those questions open up a deeper discussion and provides additional information that's important for you to know, as well as our community. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Dobbin's.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Reverend Vice Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Mayor, Attorney Gibbs, and Mrs. Prestapino. In the last work session, you had some questions about units. So on your place, you have a nice color coffee chart and a orange ruler for ease of looking. I would like to first start to orient you to the chart. You're going to see a five-year review of paraprofessionals, including some PE techs, behavior techs, and things like that. So you'll see in the green column, that is the 2015-16 school year, you'll see what the board approved originally in the first staffing plan. You will see how those units were assigned. And if you go to the second page in green, you will see the totals. Anything in royal blue means that was referendum. So for example, when you see in the second column, under elementary instructional paraprofessionals in the 15-16 school year, 58 is in royal blue, that means they were funded through referendum. If you slide over to the 18-19 school year, which is the blue shades of color, second column again, you'll see a 65, but in parentheses, you'll see 44 in royal blue. That means 44 of those 65 units were referendum funded. And you have each year listed.
I have questions about this.
Yes, ma'am.
Unless I'm reading something wrong. Prior to the referendum, we had 58 instructional paraprofessional for elementary. I'm just looking at elementary right now.
The second row. Yes, ma'am.
And so now, we have 65.
Right now, in the second column for the 19-20 school year, you approved 66 units, and we currently have assigned 50.
What am I looking at then? Oh, 19-20, I'm still in the 18-19. Gotcha. Okay. And 50 of, 50 of them were...
Assigned.
Assigned to the referendum?
50 of them are paid at a referendum, and they're assigned to schools.
Okay, here's my question. If we had 56 before, then how come we didn't take 56 from 66, and those would be funded out of the referendum? Because we were not supposed to supplant anything. We were supposed to go, the paraprofessionals that we already had in place at the time the referendum was voted on, were supposed to be what we have, and anything additional came out of the referendum. I'm seeing 58 from 66 is far from 50. So how did that happen?
All of these were funded through the referendum.
These were not?
Yep, 50. She said anything in blue was funded by the referendum.
Correct. Anything in royal blue is funded referendum.
All right, but the referendum, so what year did you start the referendum?
15-16.
So where's, I asked for the, the final year before the referendum was what I asked for?
I think you asked for 15-16.
Well, thinking that that was the year before the referendum. When did the referendum pass? When did it in 16?
14.
14. No, I, no, I wanted to go all the way back. I wanted to see before the referendum, what, what our units were, moving forward with all of them, but I needed, the whole reason for doing this, and I explained that, was to see where we were before the referendum and where we were after the referendum.
What you had requested was 15-16, so, and we don't have 14-15 here. You're correct.
Okay, then I don't need anything here. I need, I, I want the number, all you gotta do is get me that number...
I sure will.
And give it back to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know what we had prior to the referendum. I guess I was thinking it was 15-16, it was 14-15?
I'll add the 14-15 school year.
And that would be the final year before the referendum?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. That's what I need.
And Ms. Dobbin's, what, along with that, are these 58 that were funded by the referendum, which goes along with her, are those brand-new units?
I would have to go back and compare it to that 14-15 school year.
Brand-new units.
Yes, I will, I will know that once I pull in the 14-15.
They should be brand-new units if they were funded by the referendum. So we should have, that's my point. Okay. And excuse me for getting the wrong year.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say...
I'm happy to bring that back to you. It's no problem.
And if you don't mind, just email it to us, so we're not...
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I'll add the 14-15 to this entire chart and email the whole thing to you.
Okay.
All right? And if you have any questions, just please let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
The ruler was awesome.
Thank you. Amelia Bray can turn a ruler over on a dime.
Thank you. Keep it for next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
So, Ms. Boston Ellis, is that it? Was that our one thing? Okay, is there any public comment?
I have a question on the budget.
Oh, you do? Okay.
That has generated sense. People call me. Let me ask you something. I'm looking at the referendum expenditures, and it's so hard to see, like, how many we had. I'm being told that we no longer have the traveling referendum people. Tell me what, help me with that.
Correct. Again, during the budgeting process, those roving units were removed. I believe there were four or five.
Right. Were they roving for music, was it, or art, or what was it?
Art, art and music.
Okay. The reason we originally put those in there was for, to cover the large schools, so that all children at every school would have the same number of minutes of art and music, so that a student at Oak Crest wasn't getting less music than a student at Madison Street, to keep an equitable situation among all the schools. So that if they basically left 8th Street, or left Jones, or left any place, and they went over to a large school like Ward Highlands, or, or any of the schools that's got the larger numbers, the students would not be dropped in, in how much they got. So, so are we managing that?
I don't want to speak for Ms. Dobbin's, but I believe we're waiting for the 10-day count, and we will make adjustments at that point.
So you, we may add those, for those unit, roving units back in? Because I want to know...
We may have units available to put there, if that makes sense.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because our original intent was that the large schools would have just as much teacher time as the other students had, that we wouldn't have a school that just got extra time. And so if we're, and so the idea was, we had the roving teachers to make sure that that offset the larger schools, because there was like one music teacher, whatever. And so I want to make sure that every school, every student at a large elementary school has as much class time with a P E T, I mean, art teacher, P E T, whatever's in our referendum. And as the student that's at the smaller school. So you can help me with that.
Can I give you an example of what's happening during the 10-day?
Yes, you can.
So backtracking to when we started looking at units, after the report approved and applying the budget, we did cut referendum funding for roving units. As we go through the 10-day count, for example, in working with Mr. Whitehouse and in looking at numbers, we realized that the numbers of students at Hammett Bowen and Romeo, no, excuse me, let me back up, sorry, Marion Oaks and Romeo have increased so drastically that we needed to add another art unit that would be roving. So we added the art unit, unit back just yesterday. However, it's not referendum funded, because we have balanced the referendum side. So that unit's coming back, but it will be district funded paid. So, so Ms. Boston Ellis takes the referendum dollars through that committee and allocates it out until it's balanced. Right now, my understanding is it's balanced, so anything we add back has to come from somewhere else.
Okay, so, that's good. I just want to make sure that every student in the district receives the same amount of minutes per week for, and I know you do it, sometimes y'all do it twice a week, once a week, and you have, they're different, every school sets up their own pattern. I want to make sure the minutes per week balance for every student to have access to an arts teacher district-wide. Okay, thank you.
And may I, along those same lines, I reiterate again, we, we need to start thinking about, and I'm glad to hear that was district-funded, how do we begin the process? Because there's no guarantee that in another four years, we can fund that referendum again. So we need to start thinking about, on an annual basis, how do we gradually take some of those back into the general budget? I mean, we have, we absolutely have to do that. The community asks us to do that, and we need to start having those conversations about how do we gradually, with keeping the same amount of music and art, and, because that's important, you know, and maybe, maybe if we decide to go back, they'll say yes again, but we cannot guarantee that. We don't want to get down to year three and all of a sudden not have a plan. So that plan has to start happening, and we need to start looking at, how can we begin to weave some of those units back in?
And that was the intent of providing that schedule for you last week, to show you where we might be in terms of expenditures...
Yep.
...when it relates to salaries in French.
But sometimes when we start doing that, Ms. McCall, we can get into the weeds and not really know what the referendum funded and what...
Well, we still have to have a plan. I mean, we can, or we're going to be right back in the same situation that, and this community is very generous, but we have to do our due...
First of all, there's no way we can absorb $20 million back in.
We have to do our due diligence.
But I understand the reason for this, but we also don't want to be getting it all muddied up to where we don't even know what the referendum's paying for if the people ask us. We need to have a clear statement on that.
We can provide you, like we do with the ICROC, quarterly analysis, and we provide the number of units budgeted, the actual units working. So it is, it's very detailed, and I would be happy to provide that to you as well.
Because as people go away, you, me, people go away, that weren't here when that referendum first started, memories start to fade. And so...
And I don't disagree with that, but I do say we, the community's asked us to start thinking about a plan.
Well, that's nice to, that's, I mean, that's, that's a good planning feature, but there's no way we could absorb $20 million back in. But we can look at what...
Without getting $20 million, additional revenue.
We'd have to have, like, fall from the sky. Raining millions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any public comment?
Need to work on that.
And none? All right, now we will move to homeless needy student update with Mr. Elers.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Vice Chair Cummings.
Good morning.
Ms. McCall, Ms. Stacy, Ms. Thrower, Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Prestapino. Here to give you an update on our homeless and needy program, Tom Butler and Wanda Shelton are here with me. They'll be available for questions, or if you've got anything you want to ask of them. The purpose today is to provide a fiscal and operational update to the school board on our homeless and needy children program. We currently are serving 2,176 homeless children in our district. That number can change literally day to day. So if we go look at this tomorrow, the number's likely going to change. Our charge last year for this department, the homeless and needy department was directed to bring in departmental operations and make them much more accountable and have rigorous bookkeeping processes in place. Anecdotally, and maybe even factually, some of you are aware that we had some problems with knowing at any given time how much money we had in our present, in our budget, how many supplies we had in our warehouse, where those were going, who they were going to, why they were going out, all those sorts of things. So Dr. Mayor directed the internal auditing department to work with homeless and needy to make sure that we had a system in place. Based on that audit and the record-keeping we kept, these are the statistics from last school year, that we were able to aid 517 children and/or families receiving clothing, shoes, jackets, et cetera. 23 families were relocated to Marion County due to Hurricane Michael, and we were able to assist them with clothing and school supplies the day they walked in the door. We sponsored over 300 families for Christmas, providing gifts to our students and siblings. So we didn't just limit it to that child that was ours. There may have been older siblings, but particularly younger siblings that weren't in our system. 75 different families received food assistance from us in a variety of ways, including Publix gift cards to go out and, or actually Public, not gift cards, but public purchases, where we went out with a public card and bought staples for them. And then 490, 4,960 different school supply items, folders, paper, pens, pencils, et cetera, were distributed last year. Last year, we began with a balance of $103,149.61. We received 40,000, roughly 45, 40,500 in donations, expended about $43,000. And our current balance in July of 2019, at the end of the, beginning of the fiscal year, was just over $100,000. Grants that are in progress, we've received 62,000 with the hurricane recovery assistant grants. That's part of what paid for the students with Michael. And we have applied in understanding we're a very strong candidate to receive a Title IX Part A homeless and youth project funding grant for $115,000 for the 2019-2020 school year. The feedback we got on the grant to Ms. Sentin's office was that we scored very high on that. So we anticipate good results with that grant application. Our Mission Bus Brigade, as you know, we rebranded this year for some reasons that you are aware of, but our Mission Bus Brigade has been very successful. One thing I wanted you to be aware of, that our goal with Mission Bus Brigade this year was to avoid having that warehouse full of pens, pencils, folders. To me, one of the key focus areas that we've had is we cannot continue to have stuff sitting in a warehouse or in a bin.
Can I applaud you for that? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's, it's, if a, you know, you think of grandparents, people on fixed incomes that are taking from their want and providing folders or, or things. I've seen people at Publix and The Villages doing it, you know, where they're donating stuff through Publix, through a collection bin. If that is sitting in a bin, it's not in any child's hand. And we've, in the past, had stuff that literally got thrown away because it got damaged sitting in a warehouse. Well, we need to get it in a kid's hand. Our goal was every single item collected would be in a kid or at a school, so they could put it in a kid's stand on the first day of school, and we met that goal. And that's a credit to those people sitting back there. So don't thank me, thank them. That was hard work. You know, one of the big focuses this year with this team is less about being on the float waving their hands, you know, in the parade raising funds. That's important, and we know that's part of it. But the hard, nitty-gritty work, Adrian is not here today. Adrian is in shorts and a t-shirt packing up bins to get them out to school. So that hard work in the background is critically important. And just wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions if you had about what we're doing.
I want a sec to make a comment. I actually helped a family, and it was, I don't know if the school board's ever dealt with our homeless department, but I did work with them with a, with a family, and it was so nice. They, it was quick. It was, I guess it was fall, not last fall, but the fall before, and a couple of children had landed down here with an aunt, and the mother wasn't taking them back to New Jersey, and it was just kind of, and it just all happened real quick, and I was contacted as a school board member and got involved. And, you know, they came, they went, they picked up food, they had everything ready, and it, the homeless department just worked really, really quick, and, Tom, you were there. And, and I just made a phone call, and it was like, poof, it all happened. And they got exactly what they needed. And Tom, actually, I think I even was talking to you after hours, trying to get this family lined up. But, anyway, I want to thank you still. I'm still in touch with that family. I'm still involved with them. I still pay their cell phones. Thank you.
And when you talk about after hours, I want to share to Mr. Butler. You remember towards the end of the summer, when there was, the incident was some of our students, two of our students who were going to the Boys and Girls Club, and one of those rock stars at the Boys and Girls Club realized they hadn't shown up for a while and went out to look for them, and found them to be in a situation where they had no A C, they were left alone. Before I could even pick up the phone, Mr. Butler had already made contact with that family, and had, both he and Wanda took care of getting them box fans and food, and, and just had them in a much better place, so, yep.
Now, that kind of leads to my, my question that I have for you, and I applaud you guys because that is needed work. What do we do, what are we doing after we've assessed the situation? Are we making proper referrals to other agencies that kind of help these folk get into a better situation? Are we just helping them one time and then just kind of leaving them out there?
Yes. What happens is, once we evaluate their needs, we provide the services for them, and then the social workers or the social worker assistants, they follow up with referrals to other agencies that will help them in that process for the next time.
Do we do, do we do like a periodic check-in to see where they are after we've done their initial?
That's in the works. With the new grant coming in... With the new grant coming in, we're going to have a couple of other people.
I'm not trying to give out no more work.
Yes.
But, but oftentimes, you know, we will help. It's like the guy on the side of the road, we'll help him one time, he gets a meal for that day. But what happens the next five days and to sustain themselves and...
Yes.
Mr. Butler is very involved with the Children's Alliance, where all those agencies come together and they do collaborate. And he, and he knows exactly who, who needs to be called.
Exactly, this family that I worked with, I didn't even know these outfits even existed that Mr. Butler shared with his family to go to. It was new, some of it was new names to me that, that they went to. I guess I'd heard about them, but I didn't really fully understand what the agencies did. But yeah, they, this lady had so much, so many cases to call.
That's good.
So it was good.
One thing I want to throw into, and especially since we've got Mr. McGowan here. We rely also, and they do a great job, our school counselors, I can't say enough about what they do about watching those kids, because, you know, at the school sites, principals, assistant principals, teachers keeping an eye on kids and reaching out to us to get, get supplies. So we've got a lot of people in our school community that are assisting these families on a day to day basis.
Yes, so many unsung heroes.
Yes.
I've cherished my collaborations with the social work department, psychological services, guidance counselors. There is a deep network of support that the community, you know, is probably becoming more aware of due to even more outreach and social media, but, but it's always been there. And Kathy Richardson, who was our director of student services years ago, she called us the underground Disney. You know, you just activate the network of these incredibly caring souls that just step up and make it happen for kids.
Thank you. It's wonderful to hear this.
Thank you. It's very uplifting.
Accountability, we're getting step out.
Is there any public comment CNN? All right, now we will discuss the threat assessment and response protocol with Mr. Ellers.
Good morning again. Mr. McGowan and Ms. Steckman are going to be joining us. One thing I wanted you to be aware of when we presented this as an agenda item to Dr. Mayer, she felt like because of the integrated piece that comes into play with this that you'll gather from our presentation, that we wanted to make sure that you heard all parts of how this process works to the, to the best of our ability. It is a very complex system, a very detailed system, and something that the state legislature, in their urgency to address the needs based on the shootings in Parkland, really pushed down to the districts extremely quickly. And we'll paint that picture a little bit for you also. The purpose is just to update you on our implementation of the mental health and threat assessment mandates that are a part of our district requirements at this time. The first thing is just a reminder of the two pieces of legislation. And the reason we really refer to these as Senate bills, they're now laws, but because they were omnibus bills, where there are just tons of different statutes that were involved and modified in these bills, it's easier to just talk about them in their Senate bill form. But Senate Bill 7026 was that bill that was written in reaction to the Parkland shootings. It implemented a lot of the school security, safety, the armed guardians or SROs on campuses, the requirements for safety evaluations, all those sorts of things were in that bill. As a follow up to that bill, after some of the hearings that were held, they heard some of the weaknesses and strengths that happened at Parkland and other situations throughout the state. Bill 7030 was written, and it was a follow up that clarified and really expanded a lot of the requirements. And that's, most of what we're talking about today comes out of that 7030 piece. We have our FDE requirements, this chart really lays out the three major portions of these requirements. The first piece is the development of the Florida School Safety Portal. It requires a portal that the state runs that has information on students that are considered to be at risk of possibly causing mass harm. It allows us to go into this portal and access a variety of different pieces of information, things such as criminal background, mental health screenings that are done outside of the school district. So for instance, a student was Baker acted in the community and sent to the centers that we will, when this is all put in place, have access to mental health records if we need to gather those up. Now, obviously, because of the complexity of this system and the amount of confidential information, there's some very specific protocols that are put in place. Right now, Mr. McFattan is working with our IT department to set up permissions and all the different ways that we protect this data, but also allow needed people to access it. The second piece, and this is the piece we've been working on very intensely in my department, is a behavioral threat assessment instrument. We are mandated to use a standard threat assessment instrument across the district. Now, our district has had a threat assessment protocol for about two years, and that really puts us ahead of the curve compared to some districts. However, it was not in compliance with the, the threat assessment protocol that the state's requiring. This threat assessment protocol uses some terminology that I wanted to familiarize yourself. We really classify a student threat one of three ways. So let's say a student makes a threat. We sit down as a threat assessment team, and the first person on the team is usually the dean or the AP that gets this reported to them. And they determine if the threat is a transient or substantive threat. A transient threat is a threat that either could have been a joke, a figure of speech, or possibly, and Ms. Thrower with her background knows this, one of those students that has sort of the emotional behavioral concerns, a lot of times will throw a term out that two minutes later, they've turned around and are fine with, you know. I had to kill that teacher. Well, two minutes later, Mr. Ellers walks in the office. I didn't mean it, Mr., I'm sorry, I, I want to apologize, you know. And a legitimate, serious apology about a, a one off type of statement like that is considered a transient threat. The reason we worry about transient threats and trying to classify those is those are threats that research tells us aren't a serious threat to schools or to other people. Now, we monitor those, we record those, and it's part of our record keeping process that we keep records on that. However, those we sort of move on from. What we worry a little bit more about are substantive threats. And we classify those two different ways. Substantive threats that are serious and substantive threats that are very serious. A substantive threat that is serious is a, what we call a hands fit, fist or feet type of threat. I'm going to beat you up, I'm going to punch you, I'm going to slap you, I'm going to kick you, those sorts of threats. If a student is intent on that, we consider that a serious substantive. A good way to think about that is a misdemeanor assault. The most serious type of threat, and the one that we have to dive in depth on, is a very serious substantive threat. Those are felonious assaults. It's usually something where a child is threatening to kill somebody, threatening to seriously injure in a life threatening type of way, or rape, something of that nature. Those threats are where we dive very deep with our mental health teams and make sure that we're doing a very thorough job of investigating. It's one of the findings from Parkland is that there was evidence out there that the shooter at Parkland had expressed some of these pieces, and the follow up just wasn't there within the school district and outside of the school district. We're in the process of updating all of that information. We were given this mandate on August 1st with the, in the specific direction that we had to implement it day one. So that August 1st to August 12th, which is very typical of these types of legislation. We scrambled, put together some presentations. So far, at this point, we've trained all of our deans, because they're right at the front line of this, all of our assistant principals for discipline, worked with our psychologists and social workers to implement. But we do know that we've got further training needs, and we're going to be doing some overviews with our principals very soon. And we did ask our deans to go back and share with our principals all this information. And we are getting phone calls on a fairly regular basis in support of those. So we, we made sure we put some things in place immediately. But do understand that this is a process that we're going to be rolling out over the entire school year and making better every single day. Want to turn it over to Amanda to talk about the emotional mental health piece and the portal that we've developed.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Mayer, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Presspatino. The reason why my name is associated with threat assessment is because we help house the information on a secure portal link. So every single school has access to this secure portal. It's view only for the team members that are directly impacting that portal. And what that looks like is, once a threat assessment is complete, all of that information, all the forms that were used in that assessment get uploaded to that portal. That is embedded within our multidisciplinary teams at our schools, and so they have multiple functions. Those multidisciplinary teams, they meet whenever there is a crisis to determine level of threat, if there's a suicide, determining assessment for that. And they also meet routinely to discuss interventions for students that have been identified that need further intervention, both school based and community based. So that's why we're up there for that section of the document. And then moving forward, this came up last time we were in front of you, the mental emotional, mental health education for students in grades six through 12. And that information, we have targeted a potential curriculum for our students. That was actually the easier part. The more difficult is determining how we're going to get that out to the students. So we're working with secondary education, Kim McAtier and his team to determine what's the best way that we can provide that presentation to all of our students. And as a reminder, we have to get that plan in place by December 1, and we also have to implement it this school year. And again, that's for all students in grades six through 12. So any questions about that?
I just have a quick comment, thinking about teachable moments, you know. And, and the teachers really are the first line of defense with this. Because in the old days, you could just, you know, get mad at somebody and say, I'm going to kill you. And that's it.
Our parents said too.
Yes, exactly, exactly. It was never taken in the literal sense. And, and now our task is trying to comb through and determine what's credible, you know, what isn't. And there's been so many kids that have gotten large suspensions and alternate, alternate, alternative placements. They, you would think they would realize the gravity of their words in this day and age, but they're kids. So they don't all the time.
So I'll just say from my perspective as a former school counselor that I've dealt with those situations personally where a student will say something, and then just by the, the nature of the situation and with the atmosphere of litigation, I'll say, is that we're going to play it safe, we're going to refer that student on. For we know something that was a one off, like Mr. Eller said, that really wasn't, there was no content behind it, there was no intent behind it. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Ellers on this, but part of the threat assessment protocol, part of the procedures in place walks through that, and it helps make that determination. If this is a, a random comment out of frustration or anger, out of whatever, or if there is more substantive issues behind it, and then that can be addressed, so.
Correct, and that, and that's after the comment is made. And so I'm circling back around to the, the preventive piece. And I was thinking about what you shared, Reverend Cummings, you know, growing up, you know, fistfights, you handled it and it was over. But it's a new day, it's, it's a new time, and, and kids really have to be made aware.
So I think that's the awareness and the training, so that's two piece. That's the five hours, which in the big scheme of a student's school year is, is minor. You know, when we're talking about five years, but it's still something that's now required to be done, which is helpful. But also, keep in mind, all of our district employees now have to be trained in youth mental health first aid, which gives them background awareness for everything we're discussing that can directly help.
I've heard great feedback on those trainings, the teachers really appreciate it, because look what's being put on them, you know.
And just, sorry, just to give you some feedback on where we're at with the youth mental health first aid training. As a reminder, we have to train over all of our employees, so over 6,000 employees in the district. We're sitting at about 10% that we've trained so far. To move forward, we need to train about 300 staff members per month. That's what we're looking at, which is a daunting task. When we're talking about, we can only have 35 participants in one course for face to face six hour course. That's a, that's a big job. So because of that, we have requested that the state bring an instructional training to our district. So we will have an additional 16 staff members trained to be instructors for that, so we can build capacity and, yes.
You bet.
And move forward so we can meet our goal.
Right.
Yeah, I have a question about the portal. Now, is it only the threat assessment teams that, that have, that can get into the portal?
That's correct.
And it's just a view only?
Correct, so they're able to upload the documents, and once they're uploaded, then they can view the documents that they uploaded as a team.
Okay, my next question, because of our security, our police certification, now does law enforcement now have access to this portal?
The, the portal, the Florida School Safety Portal, the way that's going to look is every team member on that school campus, and when I talk about team members, that school psychologist, social worker, school counselor, student services manager, but also law enforcement officer, everyone will have their own specific role. And that's for law enforcement, for example, they'll have access to information about prior arrests. For school counselors or school psychologists, they'll have information regarding Baker acts in the community. So everyone will have specific information, access to specific information based on the role that they serve on that team.
And are, are SROs a part of those threat assessment teams?
One thing that's critically important, something that came out in Parkland, is our principals, and I actually shared with them the testimony from, or the recommendations and the directives from the, the, the commission about this, is the principal was disengaged from this process in too many cases. You know, the, the daily tasks of principals, or a fact that I don't do discipline now, I'm a principal. That's not reality, and it should never have been at all. But they are the chair of this committee, and a school resource officer is a mandatory member. So we, we're getting everybody at the table, and that's the importance of this multidisciplinary team acting as a threat assessment team, is everybody brings their expertise. I'm not a deputy, but the deputy's not a principal, and neither of us are a guidance counselor. So everybody brings their information to the table so that we can best assist that child with his mental health issues and protect every other child on that campus.
So if, so if we're looking at a, a student, let's just say that, that had the profile of the Parkland shooter, what are we doing? What are the next steps for those students? I mean, we have all this data, we know it's there, what are we doing?
That's the purpose of those routine multidisciplinary team meetings. They identify students in need of further assistance for interventions, which would include school based interventions, so that could be small groups for addressing skill deficits. But it could also mean engaging the community agencies for long term therapeutic services. So the team works not only in that crisis capacity, but also to determine what long term interventions need to be put in place for these students.
Okay, that, that was...
Part of the protocol, so is, we should be developing, we don't just identify the level of threat, we develop a safety plan for that child. And it could be anything from some schedule changes for a threat against another child up to and including, you know, providing services at SERMI where we put some very tight stipulations in place even in addition to what they do there. But we're going to try to keep an eye on these kids constantly. The whole idea is even if we, as, I shouldn't say we, you as a board decide to expel a student without services for whatever reason, if they are this type of threat, we have to ensure that law enforcement is aware, this child's now been expelled. It's sort of, I don't want to say tag your it, because we still need to be involved as much as possible, but making sure law enforcement is well aware that they need to be upping their monitoring of this child.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Stacy? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Ms. Stacy?
Yes, that's all good, that we're doing all that. But I tend to look through different eyes sometimes at things. And so what I'm seeing through my eyes is the culture of the family. And if there was some way that we could get letters to the parents, some type of whatever, some of the parents don't go on portals, but like, done in red. We have to talk different to our children, because your children will get suspended or expelled if they come in here and say, "I'm gonna take you out." Because the culture of the South, we kind of say things we really don't mean, we kid around with our kids, our grandmother said it. You know, I mean, I remember my grandmother saying, "You do that again, I'm gonna blow my brains out." I mean, I'm like, huh, I didn't think anything about it, but today it's a horrible thing. But I'd say, "Oh, Grandma, you're not," you know, it was just like a joke. Or maybe we'd say, "I brought you into this world, I'm gonna take you out, kid, if you do that again." I mean, those kind of comments and give parents examples of things that we're talking about, because sometimes these kids are mimicking their parents' words. They don't even know what it means. You know, there was things that my grandmother and my mom would say to me that kind of became like just a habit to say, and but you come to these schools in these days and say it, and ooh, you're in, you know, you could lose your education. And so I think the parents, I think we need to just maybe have some way, we have ways, we should be talking to our parents. And, because the thought police now, you know, the word police and everything, is reality because of what's happening, because that's all you have to go on is their words. So you have to be the word police. The parents are saying things at home that they mean in a kidding way, and if their child comes with that same attitude, then they're gonna get in big trouble. So we have a root problem in our homes with our parents saying things they really don't mean.
And I do get your point with this. One of the pieces in this threat assessment protocol is to try to determine that those are what, that would be a perfect example of a transient threat. You know, somebody, a parent saying, "Get in the car now, or I'm going to kill you." That's not an intent. We try to parse through that type of information and level the consequence as appropriate. Now, another example of a transient threat where we would likely recommend an expulsion with or without services is a student that calls in a bomb threat because they want to get out of a math test. Well, that's a transient threat, more than likely. We interview the child, we find out they didn't really intend to do that, they wanted to get out, it was a joke. We send law enforcement out, there's no evidence that they were learning to build bombs, there was no evidence of acquiring materials to do that. That's still an extremely serious disciplinary consequence, but the mental health aspect isn't going to be nearly as involved, although we're still probably gonna send a child like that for some screeners through some agencies.
Many parents just don't realize that these words that they say, if their children go and they mimic them, they're in real big trouble when they get here.
That's what a parent conference used to be for.
Yeah. But now, I think there was a way to just blast, like on our public service comments or something, be careful what you say to your child in joking fashion, because your child could lose his education if he comes to school and mimics you.
Mr. Christiansen does.
And that's a very good point.
He does that.
That's a very good, that's a very good point. And we are part of that mental health plan. One of our goals was family and community engagement, and I think that could be one of those components of our goal, and to inform parents.
Parents, I mean, they're their children's first teacher.
Right.
And if they say these things, and the student knows Mom's just kidding, you know, then they go to school and they're just kidding, well, people around them don't know that, so, because they don't know Mom, they learned it from Mom. So many of the things goes back to that.
Right. Right, Mr. Cummings?
I did have a question. When you were classifying these threat assessments, are you taking into consideration the perpetrator, or potential perpetrators? What factors are you looking at? And I think, I'm thinking of this, because I remember one of my kids, when he was in like kindergarten at one of our schools, and he was playing Power Rangers with another kid. And the kid said, "I killed you." And he said, "No, I'm gonna kill you." And then here I get these calls, and then, instead of looking at the totality of the situation and saying, "Okay, they're playing a game," this is what, so we had to have one of those conversations that you're talking about, about language because of this. So are we looking at the factors before we start putting kids in these tracks that are gonna follow them for a long time?
We definitely are, and it's an ongoing piece of education with all of our deans and assistant principals for discipline. One thing Dr. Cornell states in the threat assessment manual is context is more important than the statement. So for instance, you know, when I had little kids and told them, "I'm going to kill you if you don't get in the car right now," the context is much different than if I go to school as a teacher and say, "I'm gonna kill you if you don't get there." And the context would even be more different than if I'm at the mall and tell some kid just randomly, "I'm gonna kill you." So it's not so much the statement that was made, the words that were used, as what is the entire context around it. So, and we actually went through a protocol with the deans where we talked about two kindergartners in the cafeteria going bang, 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 and they're shooting back, bang, bang, bang. Well, that's not even a threat. It's two kids playing. So looking at age, the situation in totality is critically important.
And then the other thing, I did hear you say that they do develop a plan, it's like an IEP for a kid that has, or a person that has been identified as somebody that you need to track. There is a, like a plan, what's that plan called? Is it a safety plan? So they follow, they periodically check up on that student.
And it's within the context of that MTSS framework. So at tier two, you may have a plan, but it wouldn't get to the level of an IEP unless they see that it's a manifestation of their disability that they've been...
Could you put that in plain English, please, for MTSS, IEPs? You throw out a lot.
Yeah, to the acronyms.
So as the multi-tiered system of support framework, what we look at is at tier one, there's three tiers. At tier one, it's the basic curriculum that everyone receives. Tier two is when we see a group of students that have a similar skill deficit, and we target that behavior through intervention. If the students still struggle, then they move on to what's called tier three, which is individualized support for that particular behavior. And then if they are still struggling, that's part of the identification of potential ESE. And then they would...
At what tier is the parent involved?
Tier two and above. We're including, yep, tier two, three.
Why do you wait to the second tier?
Say it again.
Why do you wait to the second tier that involves the parent?
Well, tier one, they get the basic curriculum that everyone receives. Correct. Right, everyone's at tier one.
The start is tier two.
Right, once they, once we identify an intervention for a student, the parent is notified right away, and they're provided an opportunity to give input to the team.
Let me share a little bit too with safety plans. And I'm glad Mrs. Thrower is well aware of this, because she's, it's sort of what her job used to be in many ways. If we know that a child has expressed a substantive threat, safety plans are put in place. And I will say, Mrs. King, as a teacher, had a safety plan, Mrs. McCall likely also, and it could be something minor. You know, two children not getting along, and you're just perceiving there's a threatening action, a good teacher, one that's really self-aware, what do you do? You separate the kids. So that's a very low-level safety plan. It could be something very elaborate, similar to what Mrs. Thrower would put in place for a child that we've got in a self-contained behavior unit that's psychotic, is if we see that, that we have a constant escort, sight-sound escort at all times, that they have staggered releases to go to classes, so that way they're not around other children. So there's a wide spectrum of safety plans that we'll put in place depending on the individual need of the child.
And really, the parents are involved starting at tier one, because you think about the start of the school year and the outreach that goes to all of the parents, you know, here's what we expect, the basic expectations, do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated, that's what this looks like on this campus, blah, blah, blah. So I think the parents are involved at every level, it just gets more and more intense. And what I really am relieved to see with all of this is that it reduces the fragmentation. You know, there's always been people trying to do the right thing and get these kids the help that they need. But too many times, it's fallen through the cracks because they've done their part, and then you hope that the next person is doing theirs, and you don't have that cross-communication. We're beginning to see that now.
Just to add to that, and Reverend Cummings, you brought up, you know, all right, we've addressed the immediate concern, now what? One of the things that the bill and now the law requires us is within three days, we send that information on to the next school for student leaves. So we have that in place. So the portal, our internal portal we've been discussing, where we document our interactions, our next steps with a student, if that student leaves from elementary A and goes to elementary B, by law, we're required within three days to get that information to the new school. So there's no drop in services. And that also includes a student moving out of district, which comes directly from the Parkland Commission about one of their issues with not following up with all this mountain of data on a particular student, and then nothing is sent on. That is all in law, and we've already worked with Mr. Ellers, we've got a plan in place. So within three days, that's moving on to the next school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a short recess, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Okay. We are reconvening at 10:14 a.m. Now, we will be discussing hurricane shelter update with Mr. Robert Knight.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Mayer, this is Preston Patino, Preston Patino, and Mr. Gibbs. I do not have a presentation this morning. I think this is more of answering any questions slash giving any updates desired on hurricane sheltering. I believe I'm the only one here that's ready to talk about hurricane sheltering. So, it's okay with you. I'll either give you an update or if you have particular questions and want to start there first, I'd be happy to do that as well. But, I do not have an actual presentation for you since we don't necessarily cover sheltering in Facilities Department, but obviously, we know them because we're the ones that design and build them. So, I guess I'll start with an update. That is that we've met with the county multiple times, most recently this past Tuesday. And the gist of their, they had really only one concern and that was they had felt there's some new people in the county that handle this topic. And they felt like maybe they didn't have the information they needed to make decisions on hurricane shelter usage. So, we, back August 15th, gave them a sheet. It's a sheet we've passed out many times before that indicate which schools out of the 50 school sites that we have have either been designated a shelter or meet the criteria for a shelter. And there's really only one set of criteria years ago, and I'll just give you a quick history. After the Hurricane Andrew in 1992, the state of Florida in 1993 held a hurricane conference. I was there, but I was working actually for another school district at the time as their primary in-house designer. And they asked the University of Florida to help write new hurricane criteria because so many buildings in Miami and Miami Dade failed that were thought to be very strong. So, in 1994, the University of Florida issued to the state a partial or a draft of hurricane standards. SREF State Requirements for Education Facilities came into play in 1994. It replaced the old 6A2 code. In 1997, the very next addition of SREF, it included those new hurricane standards. Prior to 1997, school sites that were used as a shelter were referred to as hurricane shelter zones, protection zones. There were a couple of different names and it was changed to EHPA, which stands for Enhanced Hurricane Protection Area, because it's no longer just a school or just a building. It's an area within the school or community college and now, most recently, Florida colleges that is to serve as a shelter. That criteria has remained the same since 1997. And that criteria to meet an EHPA designation is you designed the wind speed at the time that facility is built, which all our schools are always designed to the wind speed, shelter or not, because that's the code. In addition, the shelter designated area has to meet a missile impact test. And that's where, and I'm not going to go through all the acronyms, but the National Association of Civil Engineers and American Standard Testing Materials test different types of structures for hurricane impact. They fire a two-by-four out of a cannon at a certain speed at a wall. They measure the impact on that wall and it gets a rating based on that. In addition to the structural beefing up, an EHPA shelter has to provide some means of backup power for certain elements of it. The elements are considered life safety. So, they are exit signs, they are your emergency lights. Not every light in the school, but every classroom has an emergency light in it. And four outlets in the EHPA manager's office, usually this manager's office is found in the cafeteria, and some means of ventilation. And believe it or not, if you've got a school with a lot of windows, your ventilation can be an exhaust fan. It's two cubic feet per minute, which is a typical exhaust fan. We tend to put air handlers on our generators just because if the bathroom is way at the other end of the hall, you're not really going to move all that much in terms of air without opening windows. And finally, you are to, school shelters have to have some means of alternative water for drinking and for waste. So, Forest High School, there's a large pipe, the idea being that a tanker truck brings that water if they lose water service from the county. At a school site like Dunellen High School, because it's on a well, we already have a generator for the well, not because it's a shelter, just because if we lose power down the street, we've lost water for the whole school and the elementary next door. So, the well already has a generator on it. So, that would count as a means of backup water source. So, there are nine school sites that have a shelter building or buildings that meet all of the provisions of Enhanced Hurricane Protection Area. There are five more schools and I've got to hand out, so you can all see this. I'll just pause a moment to hand it out and then I'll kind of follow along with what's here. Few more than just eight copies here, so. And the extra copies, I'll make available on the table. But, there are five other sites that meet a portion of the EHPA. And they were either never designed to be a shelter and were made a shelter because of their location, or maybe they're hardened structurally, but don't have a generator to provide backup power. So, it is a safe zone to get in and out of the wind or out of the flood zone, but it's simply not called EHPA. Doesn't mean we can't use them. It just simply means we cannot designate them as an EHPA shelter. So, that gives the school district a total of 14 sites that are being used as a shelter in some means. And our suggestion to the county is perhaps it's time to go back to each of these 14 and reassess who you put when there's a threat. In other words, you probably use any shelter for flooding unless the flooding is happening at that site, or for tropical storm or a low-grade hurricane, but you don't want to use every single location if a Category 5 is coming straight through the Dunellen area because the impact of winds will be so strong that some of the shelters will not be able to handle those wind speeds. So, the county, I believe, is going back and revisiting those. They have some other ideas about perhaps relocating some of the shelter usage from existing schools to other schools that are existing that are newer. And that's something that I think will be an ongoing discussion between the school system and the Emergency Operations Center as they get a little further into their role and familiarity with what we have available. So, that's in a nutshell, the discussion. They have walked several of our schools and like I said, they seem to think that there are better locations for hurricane shelters than the ones we've been using for years. And again, I believe some of those shelters were picked simply because of their location, not necessarily because they have the provisions for them, but they're closer to maybe where the populace was back when they were assigned. So, that's sort of the latest. I believe it's going to be an ongoing discussion as we kind of pick up the pieces and ensure who is able to communicate with them and who isn't. And we're probably the best resource simply because eight of the nine EHPA buildings that have been built, have been built since I've been here and I've been involved in every single one of them. So, with that in mind, I believe the county's next move is they'll be coming back to us to talk further about the information we've provided with them. And again, we've given them some suggestion about a hierarchy. You know, do you open every shelter? Well, depends on what kind of threat we have weather-wise. And probably there will be some situations where we elect not to open a shelter simply because it's too close to a flood zone, or it does not have backup water or backup power capabilities. And so, it's great for six, seven, eight hours while there's a tropical storm in the Gulf that goes away, but probably not where we can expect people to sustain a reasonable life, living conditions for say beyond eight hours, which we know that eight hours is what's in the statute, but storms could hang around for 24, 36 hours and not even impact us yet. And we've got people in shelters. I think Vanguard High had people eight days in the shelter back in 2004. So, that's in a nutshell, some of the recent discussion we've had with the county. I don't know if there's any particular questions or thoughts or concerns. Be happy to address anything that you might have. But, as far as an update, I think that's where we stand. I do want to point out that there's certainly no reason to feel uncomfortable about any one of these 14 school sites being used as a shelter today if we had to. It'd be a matter of moving personnel and food and other provisions in there, but as far as the structure and its support systems, they've been ready since they became a shelter. Some of them 20-plus years going. And we're in good shape on that front, so be happy to answer any questions. It's all I've really got.
Well, I believe we appreciate your update. I do want to, because Preston was supposed to be here today. He had to reschedule because he needs some time to look at some things. So, I would like to put Mr. Bolin on the September 5th work session and I think we'll probably learn more unless you guys have something you have to ask right now.
I do have a question too, though. Just hearing you talk. You said the 14 schools, then you got nine blued in, the best. But, then you also said, but we wouldn't open them all and if we needed this or that. So, to get specific, which ones would you open first of these nine?
Well, let me, I'll just kind of paint a perspective. If you're looking at this sheet that I handed out, on the front page, there are six schools that are blued in or colored in blue. And if you go all the way across Lake Weir High School, just Building 2, and Building 1, which is not EHPA, that's the round building. Building 2 is their cafeteria. It was designed to meet a wind code of 140 miles per hour. Well, if you go look up at Dunellen High School, Buildings 23 and 24 at the time, they were built in the late 90s, only meet 100 miles per hour. So, obviously, if you've got a Category 1 or a tropical storm, or just some low-pressure system that's coming through that's just going to dump a lot of rain and uproot a lot of trees, and there's no real threat from a hurricane because it's not one, you could take your pick as to if you need a shelter, which one to open. But, if it was a Category 4 coming through, right through Dunellen, I would absolutely not open a school that's underneath the minimum sustained winds of that hurricane. And that's what we were talking with the county about is perhaps it's time not just to think, well, we'll open this school because Madison Street's in the middle of town, but you should really focus on the capabilities of the school because the EHPA-designated schools all have the same capability. The non-EHPA do not. Dunellen High has an onsite well that's on a generator and it did meet the wind speed code at the time, so water isn't an issue, but there is no generator there that runs those two buildings if you lose power. And if you go to Forest High School, or Westport, or Vanguard, you do have a generator to run power if you lose power. So, there is some differences there. It may not be massively critical, but a lot of it depends on how many people show up and how long you're going to have them there. If everybody's there eight hours, I'm sure we all went through it, no, four, I did. You tough it out for eight hours with no power till it comes back on. Five days later, it gets much harder to tough out with no power because you've got no ability to make food, no ability to refrigerate food. In some cases where there's not a well or a backup tank, you don't have water at all. So, that was what our recommendation to the county was, that we can't make that designation as to what to open when. It's up to the county legally. They have the responsibility, but by providing this data, we are hoping that they'll be able to get a little more finite in their hierarchy depending on what storm comes through.
What about the generator situation as far as for special needs shelter?
Well, there is no school site, maybe any site actually in the county, that's ever been designed and built as a special needs shelter. The criteria for special needs is exactly, there really is only one set of criteria and that is an EHPA designation. What the statutes in the building code recommend that is if you're going to have a special needs shelter, you really need to design it before you build it because of the cost of retrofitting afterward and it is an immense cost. And so, you're required to do the same things you are in any other shelter. Now, the statutes recommend that if you're going to design and build a hurricane shelter that's special needs, that you add additional power to the school for medical equipment. And they recommend that you entertain cooling those sites, not just moving air, but cooling. So, as far as generators and Mr. Cummings, I believe you're thinking about the grant we've got last fall for generators. I'm not sure if you're speaking about a specific site, but currently, I believe the county has re-designated Forest High School and Westport High School as a place to put special needs if needed. And of course, Forest High School has the ability to have a generator plugged into it and Westport has a generator on-site now. But, neither one were ever designed and built to special needs. And so, if you go to Forest, for instance, really don't have any other outlets in the school set up to spread out medical equipment because the hurricane shelter criteria is you need to put them where the manager's office is going to be so they could plug ham radios in and other communications efforts. So, that would be something we did tell the county, we'll have to separate outlets because to get a generator to run the whole school, you're basically building a mini power plant there and you're talking a one and a half to two and a half million dollar investment.
I think, we know we have a second part of this work session coming on September 5th and I think we'll carry on then if you guys are okay with that, we're okay with that.
I'm kind of concerned this, this hurricane season's on us.
So, could you just say again, if a hurricane happened five minutes ago, would we be ready to roll?
Yes, as far as the facilities, we're ready to roll. We regard a lot of this exercise really as a planning mechanism for a future hurricane season just because mid-August, late-August, you could have one tomorrow. And normally in the past, when I've engaged in assisting the Risk Management Department, which oversaw hurricane shelters, we were having this discussion in January, February. So, August is rather late, but as far as any concern, there's no reason to believe that we as a school district, as far as our sites, would not be ready. We'd be ready tomorrow. It's just a matter of the folks that have the staff at moving in.
So, if we have a storm hit before our next meeting, Westport...
So if we have a, a storm hit before our next meeting, Westport is slated at a hundred and forty miles per hour, and it can also take the special needs, and it also can, has a generator that can do some air conditioning.
Yes, yes.
So, okay.
Now, we've actually walked that school yesterday, as a matter of fact, because we had noted to the county that, well, you know, that's our biggest school, and you're really only, you're only using, utilizing the gymnasiums. Cafeteria's pretty big. It was a middle school. And the high school cafeteria, now it's just a high school. We're even using the cafeteria, and it's designed for a hundred and forty miles an hour. So that's where we collaborated with the county to reassess these sites because it could be that we've got plenty of room, we're just not utilizing the room that was designed in the first place to house folks, because it's the entire central core of that school meets a hundred and forty miles an hour, and the whole block of buildings is pre-wired for a shelter, but we were only using maybe thirty percent.
How much did the generator cool, though? I know it's probably got a limited amount of square footage, I would think that...
That generator is not ours. We don't own it. It's a, it's, it's owned by the power company, and it was placed there for their load demand program, and it will power the whole school.
Oh, well, okay.
Now, if, as far as powering other school, yes. It, it, it's basically a mini power plant. Reason why we don't have one that big anywhere else is because it's a two and a half million dollar system, and we don't have two and a half million dollars to buy a single generator. So our generators power the air and ventilation systems at our other locations. But obviously, if we were to power air conditioning at any other school site, whether it's because it's a shelter or we just want air when there's no power, some serious funding would be needed to do that, because when you wire a school separate to be a hurricane shelter after the fact, you've got to cut into the main electric system and rewire the grid, and that's a quarter million dollars, last time we checked, was the cost of doing a high school. Just not including the units, just the wiring piece of it. But as far as the answer to the question, yes, Westport is, it's the only one, only school site we have where cooling beyond just ventilation can happen. And the county did decide they're going to go back and look at grants that they're aware of to see if they can find, most of the money out there is for retrofitting, which makes sense because school systems don't have the money to build a lot of new schools, and so if it's retrofit money, hopefully we can get our hands on it, partner with the county to help get these grants, and then maybe we can make an impact down the road about setting additional power resources at our schools and power more than just one site, because right now we just have the one site.
When you say the county, are you talking about the man, emergency manager?
Yes.
Director or whatever?
Yes. Yeah, they've made us aware there's grants out there, and we've offered to have our grant people talk to their grant people, because we'll take money if it's out there. We'll, we'll take every penny that's, that's available. And it's a matter of finding which grants pay for which systems, and we're in the process of having that discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none? Okay, now we'll move forward with board discussions and concerns. Ms. McColl?
Uh, yes, I am happy to announce, this morning I was the guest speaker at the CEP Board of Directors meeting, and before I left, they moved up on the Agenda IDA a grant that they approved, a twenty thousand dollar grant to the school system for the welding program at MTI. And they are using, going to use that money to do some of the infrastructure things that need to be done. So I wanted to announce that because I thought that was great. Mark was there and explained what was going to go on, but apparently welding is becoming quite the need, and so once again, MTI and MDC step up to the plate. Can somebody, Nicole, maybe, can you send us the address for the Fasano Center?
I got us covered, but Elena is going to send it to us.
Okay, because I Googled it and I...
Yeah, no, Elena, I got her on it.
Okay. And then, and then just a reminder about the fish fry, that Citrus County School Board is having, hosting for the other school boards in our area, so tomorrow, all of, all of us, except Stacey, will be headed down there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Stacy?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ms. Thrower?
Um, actually, this is something that is near and dear to me, and I'm glad that we have it, and talk about fast turnaround time for all of the handouts that we get that are paper-based, there is now a trash can right over there to put them in when we're done, and they will be recycled. So, go green.
So maybe we ought to put that in the boardroom, because I just know that's going to get a lot more than recycling.
I was wondering about that, too. Maybe it needs to be back here, behind the dais.
It's going to be a garbage can.
Put my gum in it earlier.
Oops.
See? Already?
Or a little sign above it that says recycling only.
Well, that just takes up room. People are going to be tripping over it. Did we get so many people in here?
We'll put it back here.
It needs to be put somewhere else. Yeah.
I'll be happy wherever it goes.
Okay, okay. Right there, it's coming to one of our people. Is that it, Ms. Thrower?
Actually, the second thing is, and I'm not sure if it's, it's probably a question for both Dr. Mayor and Attorney Gibbs, we had talked about starting a pilot program for our Evergreen students, our, our Evergreen students that we know are, are very behind in their reading and are now mostly at Howard Middle School as sixth graders and, and looking at doing a reading rescue program for them. Time goes by so fast, we only have a hundred and seventy-one days left of school, and I've been included on the email string, and I know there was a rather lengthy MOU and data sharing agreement that would have to be put into place for this to get going, and so I would just love to have an update on where we are with that because tentatively, there was a training schedule for tomorrow.
Yeah, data sharing I approved this morning. It got finished yesterday with Anthony's recommended additions to it, so we had one question that he was going to answer today, so it should be ready to go for tomorrow. As soon as Terry got ahold of Anthony to clear that question up, it was going to go out.
Okay, good, so it sounds like we're making progress. Yes, no?
I, I don't know about the program, so I mean, I just know the data sharing side of it, and that, that is going to be ready today, so.
Okay.
I'm sure Narvell was on top of it.
And then what about the other piece of it, Dr. Mayor, with that getting going?
We have to have that before we can move forward because of the, the data protection part of it. So before we even go past, we've got to have that. And I know, kudos to Terry, you're paralegal because she's spinning a thousand plates at once, and yeah.
Well, that's great, so it sounds like it's...
Yeah, I, I went through it today, and we just had one question, and she was going to get with Anthony this morning, try and get that question answered on how he wanted it handled. There was an inconsistency.
Okay, okay. Do you see that as being any kind of a...
No, it should just, it should be ready today. I told her to get it out one way or the other today, so.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
You don't have anything? I have a couple of items. As mentioned earlier from Teresa, our first delegation meeting is September tenth, I believe, and I will not be here, so if somebody wants to go and fill in that day, and then also we need to decide what we're going to talk about, but I know last week we discussed PICO dollars, so maybe we just want that to be our one and only item, or is there anything else we may want to put on there? But it's, we can talk about it next time, but we're going to run short, and then...
And I did have a conversation with Senator Baxley, a really lengthy conversation about it yesterday, and he gave me some steps for us to follow for, for what Nastasia brought up. So, but, but I do, I mean, I, I think they realize that PICO funding is...
It's a paid...
Is, is a big one, so I'm, I, I'm happy to go. My calendar's free, I can go. Reverend Cummings, you should probably, as vice chair, do the speaking, so.
Okay.
I think I already had that in my calendar.
And do we need to think about, is there anything else we want to discuss? Because usually Kevin would make these nice little booklets for us.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. I think we, it's, it's good to put something in their hands that we...
Do you normally do it for that one or for the legislative?
For the legislative. Well, we norma...
That's what this is.
Yes.
It's earlier, it's earlier than...
Well, do we want...
We usually do them both. We usually bring one with us, then, and then we bring it again when we go to Tallahassee.
Yeah, and it's early, and, and we might want to look at Florida School Board Association, what their legislative platform is to see, it just came through, I think, day before yesterday, to see if there's something on there, but theirs hasn't even been voted on yet. So I, I really think talking about the PICO funds for this legislative delegation...
We could accomplish that.
I mean, if we can, if we can be laser-focused this year on that, maybe.
Okay.
You know, the base student funding, they gave us more, so we need to be sure we say thank you.
And the compression funds, again.
And the compression funds we got, again, so we've got to be sure that the first thing we do is thank them, and then we can talk about PICO. I'm good with that.
Okay, so we're good with that? Okay. So if maybe Kevin, he's a great wordsmith, if you can help us generate some word, do you guys want to take the pamphlet, or are we just going to talk and not bring the pamphlet?
We just talk.
Just talk? Okay, so we won't do, never mind. All right. And then also Kevin reached out to the city of Ocala, and their room, their boardroom and stuff is not available, so I don't know what we want to do from here, if we want to just hang tight here for a little bit until we know what we're doing moving forward? Do we want to reevaluate going to the county?
We looked at, we talked about MTI, correct?
Yeah.
And saying that, was there some way to modify the room with, to make it look smaller?
Then they had the dais, the dais issue, like moving it around and sliding it.
We can have the, the company that deals with the cameras, we can have them come and look at, give us a cost to, to relocate this equipment there. You had discussed some kind of room divider. I'm not familiar with those, but I can do some research and find out about that.
The big issue was where we sit.
Yeah, the dais on the stage is, is the concern, and...
We don't really have to have...
You want to move this, I...
Anything like this, I don't...
Not sure that putting two tables up there with eight chairs is what you want to accomplish, but we'll do that if that's what you want.
No.
Well, there might be some type of collapsible desk situation, I don't know. I mean, there's, goodness knows, maybe we need to patent one for Mark to make some money, but there's got to be a way to not have to have this big thing. There are those that you can buy that, that are sectioned off, and you can move them together, but still, again, it's still a storage.
The storage has to be considered as well. You don't want to have to transport that every time it's needed.
So let me ask you, the old band rooms and things that are there that are connected right to that stage, is there any storage? If we had a dais that was possibly in sections on rollers, is there storage area in that old band room?
I'd have to go and see who's located there. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you're talking about the rooms behind.
Right behind, right behind the stage.
There's a records room there.
There are, there are, there are storage rooms on the stage that are, I believe, right now utilized by Kingdom of the Sun.
But the band room...
But the rooms behind, there are, there's, the, I, I can know, having walked through those little step areas, you can't, you can't take anything through those, they're only this wide, but we can take them out, the double doors, and see if they can be stored in those areas if they're not being utilized. I don't know who's in that area right now.
I can speak a little bit, I, I know a little bit about that campus. I've been guest speaker there since the mid-nineties when I was in the private sector, but right now, the band and the chorus area, maybe not the entire band room, but a good chunk of it is being utilized for social work services records. I mean, it is slam full, eight feet tall shelving with paper records.
Okay.
I don't think it's Mr. Air's records, I believe it's social work services, psychological services, but I've been back in there when we were assessing MTI for five-year district facilities work program. We walked through, and I walked in and disrupted two, three people working, and they're just simply filing records, pulling records, putting, and I'm, I'm not going to say it's the entire area, but you're not going to have it, there's not a whole lot of space anywhere in that building to store something of size. You know, your tables are easily stored, but something like this cut into sections, you don't want it crammed in a closet, it'll get damaged, so.
Okay, I was just...
You don't have a whole lot of options in terms of storage at MTI anyway, so unfortunately.
We're also waiting on a lot of appraisals and things like that, too, to help us determine what direction.
So maybe we just sit until we know what direction we're going to go, and then, I mean, I hate for us not to move forward with a bigger space, but unless we just want to put tables on the stage.
I'm fine with tables. I don't care, I don't have to sit behind this thing. I mean, I just want to hear the people. I don't think that, I mean, I, I understand looking good, but I'd rather be good and just look good. I think if we're there where the people can get to us, the parents can come and have seating when the children are performing and doing whatever it is that they do for us when they come here and they get honors and stuff like that, I'm, I mean, I'm a barn girl. I'm all about the horse barn.
Can you, can you, can you get some different possible seating arrangements, some different tables that may not have to be as large as, as a dais, and that could put the name tags on it, still accomplish what we need to accomplish?
I mean, you could even have something that's just a false little wall, that little false wall with legs coming in where we're at that sits there, and then we're in, nobody knows what we're sitting in behind it. We could have tables behind it, and we would just have a facade in the front, you know, that's...
Like the old western towns, they have the false front.
Have our little false front, and then roll that in somewhere.
When you consider this, think about, we have students on that campus at night, so from a state statute standpoint, you can't have people walking all over that place without some type of security measures in place. Jessica Lunsford, this right here is more screen mounted, well, we don't have students here. People come in and out, but if you go there, which I'm okay with, we'll just have to make some improvements and make some arrangements so that people know where to go, so they're not roaming all over that campus over that...
Do we have night classes over at MTI?
I...
Mm-hmm. Okay. I thought they were over in, in late afternoon, okay. I didn't know they were going at night.
But we also have work sessions in the day on Thursdays.
Yeah.
So students are there then also.
We can look at some seating options.
Okay, thank you.
Right, because we don't want to lose sight of our original goal, which was to make the school board meetings more welcoming for the community. So even if we need an interim spot that's not the Ritz, I'm totally fine with that. Obviously, we wanted to look professional, and it's, it's the details that always get us, because when you're trying to make a change, there's considerations, but we just need to keep...
Talk ourselves out?
Yeah, we can talk ourselves into something or talk ourselves out of something.
We like to hear all kinds of discussion about how we can do this, not how we can't. So, okay.
And that's coming from the devil's advocate.
Yeah, what about Brewster Hall?
What about Brewster Hall? Well, there, there would be students there, but they're adult students, so that's a little different. Would it be Mr. McFattan a little different on that aspect?
Brewster Hall would also require installation of special lighting.
Right.
You'll have that there. You have that at MTI.
Okay.
That stage lighting is available, so.
Was the lighting going to be real costly?
Well, I, this is a small room, so it doesn't take much to light you. Brewster Hall has a higher ceiling, it's a larger room. It would, I don't, I'm Mr. Knight. I don't know, a few thousand dollars, I don't know, I'm not a lighting person, but, you know, it's a different kind of ceiling over there.
You'd probably need to put a backdrop in, like you do have a wall behind you, it's a big open space, and I think with a backdrop and condensing, maybe it's a winged curtain partition on either side of you so that the board is framed, and then you could direct the lighting to it. I don't think there's going to be an issue with power. That facility, it's not that there's like a power, it's the way it's distributed, so we would probably have to grab an extra circuit or two off the main panel, which is close by, and re-feed it to power up lights. I don't know what the cost would be off the top of my head. If Kevin could come up with a cost of lighting, we could probably come up with a cost of wiring. I mean, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, even if it was temporary lights on some sort of a temporary pole. We've done this at other schools where we've erected poles, and you clip the lights on and plug them in, and when you don't need them, you unclip them and you put them away. And maybe we can come up with something like that even on a stand. But I would suggest a backdrop, curtained area, and if you had something like computer tables or something with a balance in the front that has a tray to drop cords in for technology, we can get our hands on some of those relatively quickly. We can work with Mr. Christian, assess that site if that's where the board wants to go.
I think just as far as the perception that we're working hard to be available, and all those naysayers out there that have always said, well, we can't come to the board meetings because y'all have purposely built that little tiny room, whoa, whoa, you know, what if they don't come then? That, that'll take that away, you know, when we're wanting people to support the schools when we're wanting people to support the schools with the referendums and things like that. When we're making, we're giving the public much easier access to us that's in a less intimidating situation, you know, being, if I have to take turns coming in, nobody knows who can come in and sit down, who these chairs are for. And I just think that making ourselves available to those who want to come see us, if they don't come, then they can't say they didn't have access.
Okay, yeah. I was like, maybe look at Brewster, maybe look at seating for MTI. Maybe give us a few options, and maybe we can just explore and move forward.
That was a great suggestion. Thank you, Dr. Mayor.
Don't we bring in temporary lighting for Golden Apple over it? So it's not that we don't have temporary lighting already, correct?
At Circle Square Center, that's their lighting. We'll bring in some uplights from...
Okay, okay.
But it's their stage lighting that we...
Okay.
And then one more thing. At the last work session, the board was asking you, Dr. Mayor, do we consider with your timeline of going with your first agreement of June 2020? Have you given it consideration, or yes or no?
I sent the email.
So you're talking about a few months ago, or a couple of weeks ago? The email you sent that you plan on staying until November of 2020? Okay, all right. Boy, now we know. Now we can work on our timeline.
Yeah, which we need to do.
Which we can. We could work on it now if we want. We are going to vote on Tuesday evening. We could add it on that. Mr. Gibbs, can we put the timeline on that for when we look? What we're looking to do, or should we just work on the next?
You're talking about the timeline and get back with Ray and Associates?
Yeah, and what we, we need to think about what we're going to do moving forward.
So if I remember the discussion, we talked about if that was the superintendent's choice, that we would look at having that decision made by April.
I believe so. But we need to, we need to have ideas.
So, so I did have mine, and I gave them to somebody to make copies, and I never got them back, my timelines. Nancy, I think you wanted my timelines. And I gave them, had them, and now they're gone.
Here we go.
As we talked about bringing in a consultant, possibly July the 1st, correct?
And that way, we would have finished everything by April. It's what we talked about.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll reach out to Ray's and Associates, and I'll tell them that we look to, if we're all in consensus.
To have the superintendent come in as a consultant on July the 1st.
But our timeline would be to have that, have the decision finished by April. So, because there's got to be a contract period where Mr. Gibbs will have to work, and that's going to take a while. So if April works...
If we have to move it back, we can, I mean, if we have to do it sooner, we can do it sooner. It's just...
Do you know, Mr. Gibbs, I mean, contract-wise, what do you think you're looking at?
It shouldn't take too long. To your standard terms, other than what they want to propose to change. So we have the one that we have for the attorney. It wouldn't take much to modify. I can get samples from other districts.
Okay. And if they relocate, then they have until July the 1st.
Right, they would have, once they know in April, they would have three months.
Okay. All right, so we'll reach out to them and we'll do that. Okay, well, there not being any further business, our meeting is adjourned at 10:53 a.m. Thank you.